Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call order roll call starts on my right.
Counselperson Josh Aaron.
Counselperson Brent Fire.
Mayor Jimmy John King.
Counselperson Craig Anderson.
Counselperson Jeremiah Olgin.
Looking for approval of tonight's agenda. Any additions from that?
Uh, no, we just sent some late afternoon things to you, but that should approve. Yep.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries approval of council meeting minutes of September twenty-fourth, two thousand nineteen.
I'll make a motion to approve in minutes.
Do we have a second?
Call second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Let's go on to finance and budget. You got the accounts payable with the additional accounts listing there?
So Cheryl, I already texted you today, questioning on that. So just to make sure that only part of that is to that project deal, right?
Correct, correct. Um, did you look at the backup to those?
Yeah, I was trying to figure that out. I was looking for it, I couldn't see it.
The part of it is the Northwest Development, um, the CIP and then ten thousand and some.
Okay, guys, I see. But they won't say something about it though, right? On page, well, it's page four, the finance, page eleven overall of our thing. It shows fifty-five, three, six, nine for that, right? Am I wrong? I can show bring it over and show it. Well, what I have, so do you have, why is that? What page are we on? Oh yeah, there you go. So the fifty-five, right. So that's the only thing that confused me is that I thought we paid a bunch, I know they're supposed to pay it on the back. I see the ten-nine-seven-nine, but I also see five-five-three-six-nine. That says some, oh, CIP and then sun. So it's, they're both listed up. I get it now. That's, do you see what I'm talking about?
Yeah, I do.
So that's why I just saw the sun communities and I see that on a couple of these, but I also see CIP on there.
Yeah, so it goes what fund it is and then it says what the invoice description is and that's just throwing that out there next.
Okay, so it was one invoice for a lot of different things.
So still with that fifty or whatever it was that we fronted, it still will come back to us at some point for that EAW?
Correct, that the total cost. And then any reviews and stuff that they're doing for this planning, they've given us a ten thousand dollar developer's fee. Um, and so, uh, the review monies and stuff will come off of that. And then if that ten thousand dollars doesn't cover it, we'll be invoicing them and they're responsible for it. So there should be no out-of-pocket for the city on this.
Fair enough, thanks.
Any other questions on the council table? Hearing none, a motion approved.
I'll make a motion approved.
We have a second?
A second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that also carries. I'll take this, the motions of general business. First item under general business tonight is flat hearing for flats forty-one, final plat, public hearing. Playing commission number public hearing on October first, consider preliminary plat for flats forty-one. Tonight, the council heard a public hearing to order, consider the final plat for flats forty-one, spending commissions recommended for this. Subject review letter from SEH. So at this time, I'll close the regular meeting and hold a council meeting. Any written or oral before we start? Comments?
No.
Mark Wells, the chief of engineering, representing the developer. Now, much as changed from the previous meetings, if there's any questions, I'm here to answer them. If you really have anything else to add, other than the forward, moving forward with the fighting procedure.
Right, how do you like it with PMZ?
Um, there are just a few questions, uh, otherwise it was just more less working with the neighbors out there and I think you guys have met with them.
Yeah, actually, I met with, um, Mark, we got Mark Schuman the next day and, uh, uh, everything for the easement is in place. Just need to give the documentation and give him, um, reverse.
And Quon, you guys have worked with Quon too?
Yeah. Quon, we won't meet again from digital, when we were doing the grading out there, we were able to meet with him to make sure that Quon proper put the plans together nicely.
That was the only concerns I had for PMZ. They just make sure everything was approved through general.
Okay. Any questions from this table?
This is the first of three buildings that?
That's the plan, correct.
Do you plan on getting started yet this fall too?
Trying. Um, I'm not sure where they're at as far as being a contractor and all pre-casting stuff, but that's, that's why we're kind of keeping pushing is so that we can, if we can find enough contractors and whether Quon is a little better than those in last few weeks. Or a little whole year.
All right, any other questions, any other comments from anybody? Thank Mark. Hearing none, then we have no written or roll comments? I'll close the public hearing then. Council action tonight will be, you want two, right?
Correct.
To approve preliminary plat, subject to review letter from SEH. A little motion on that?
Smooth.
Second?
A second.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Second motion will be to approve the final plat, subject to review letter from SEH. Do we have a motion?
Make that motion.
We have a second. Motion is second, any other discussion, questions? Hearing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that also carries. Thank you for stopping by.
Thanks.
Next, I have conditional use permit fence. Sturple storage, excuse me, seeking a conditional use permit to construct a six-foot chain link fence in the M-one light manufacturing district. As per section thirteen seventy-five point twenty-six of C point one, special fences. The fence will be placed on the front property line. If after the pond is completed, it looks like there's room to move the fence back, they prefer to do that. The fence will be connected to the building on the north and south buildings, which will act as a side fences. They will then connect the fence from the end of the buildings to the existing MINDO fence. Playing commissioners recommend approval of conditional use permit. Our action tonight is to approve conditional use permits requested. We have one of the owners here tonight. If you have any questions or concerns, speak to.
I have a question that I don't know if it's directed towards you or whoever, it's not to be misconstrued that I need to have my nose and everything, but so when I saw this, I was confused. I'm like, where is Sturple Storage? Trying to figure out the, the plot on this and I thought, that's just a lot. And then I see they were approving a fence already and I don't remember ever seeing anything for any buildings until today. So I, I mean, the fence, it just seems weird that the fence is the first, that's not the first thing to go up, I would assume.
So, uh, we want to include the buildings because they're needing all of our codes, so there is no variance or anything that you need to see. We've done a, we'd say review plan and we're ready to issue the building permits.
So that's the only other question I had then as far as looking at this map, I don't understand where the pond would be or anything. I'm just curious, right now, so the plan is to have the fence right up close to the road. You'd like to move back, obviously.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, just for pulling in the driveway, given big trailers and stuff, get off the road.
Due to the layout of that pond, the pond has to be right up front, so.
Oh, it does, okay.
Yeah, drain, drain.
Yeah, it doesn't flood around there at all. It's actually really wet. So when is this all ready to roll?
They, yeah, they'd like to start as soon as.
Getting started here on this year though?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a problem with that. I was just curious, it just seemed weird to me backwards, but.
Any other questions or concerns?
You gotta really work on MINDO, MINDO Kevin.
As far as.
Hooking on their fence, do we have to work with them or how's that work?
I guess I'd, I'd consider it, um, next week, we can check with them. I mean, it's.
Yeah, I have no idea.
I have to look at, see where it falls on their property line, if they've got it set back or if it's right on the property line. Assuming if it's right on the property line, it should be an issue taken, but if not, we could just propose right at the end and be done with it anyway.
Well, this have, um, is there like a gate then for people that are pulling in off Second Avenue to get in there for?
Yeah.
Yeah.
With a keypad.
Yeah, I don't really have a problem with that. I just get a little worried about the whole, we were just talking about it, that other business. You want to put a big tall fence and block it out and all that and it would look awful. This is just a chain link fence, but game, security's a good thing to me, so I don't know.
Yep. Any other questions or concerns? PMZ approved all this, so we're looking for a motion here.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes. Can you start work tonight?
Perfect.
Thank you. Next one, variance garage, one oh four Lakeshore Drive Northwest. Howard Finley, current owner at one oh four Lakeshore Drive Northwest, is seeking a three point four foot variance from required ten foot set between structures as per thirteen seventy-five point zero five. Raider stated that the intent was to build a twenty by twenty-six garage, that would be six point six feet from the house, four feet from the side property. Playing commissioners recommend approval of the variance. Council action requests is to approve the variance as requested. PMZ already gave their blessings on it. We got any questions or anything for Cheryl, Walter, or Brett?
I assume on that, four feet from the property is as close as, from the property lines, closest we can go.
They can, they can be three feet.
Three feet.
Oh, okay.
He's done a lot of work that halls.
Yeah, he should be commended for the transformation that's taken place there.
He's done several homes in this town too.
Yeah.
Cleaned them up.
Is the garage going to be on Lakeshore Drive or is it going to be on?
That there is a garage currently off of Third, so that one will stay and then this one entrance will be off of Lakeshore Drive.
Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, any motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
A second.
Motion is second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that also carries. All right, next item is, oh, that's the ordinance amendment. At the September tenth council meeting, council discussed the amendment to our tobacco ordinance to reflect the age being twenty-one on State County to buy tobacco. Council questioned the language of our ordinance, it shall be unlawful for any minor except as part of an authorized compliance check, purchase, attempt to purchase, use, or possess any tobacco-related product. Wondering if it was needed since it wasn't necessarily enforced. City Attorney Mellon Leth has advised that if it wasn't being enforced, that it wasn't necessary to be included. The new ordinance will eliminate that language, since this is administrative change, this will be the only reading of the ordinance. Section three forty tobacco, three forty point oh five, sales to minor will be amended to read. No person shall sell any tobacco-related product to any person under the age of twenty-one years of age. Council action, approve the ordinance twenty nineteen dash, an ordinance amending section three forty point oh five, sales to minors. The only question I have, this doesn't include may be stopped?
Yes, yes, that's a tobacco-related product.
Do we have a motion? Are questions or discussion or?
This is basically state law too, right?
No, it's county.
Yeah, we're just matching.
But they do have bills introduced, I think, already to try to get it.
There's so many cities that have already changed, so.
All right, will you hear a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
No, that's to approve, correct?
Yes, to approve.
All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Next item. Resolutions, number one, declaring cost for CIP two thousand nineteen, number two, setting the assessment hearing. We would like to set the assessment hearing for the two thousand nineteen CIP, which includes improvements on Fourth Avenue southeast, Fifth Street southeast, Third Avenue southeast. The first resolution needed is to declare the cost order preparation of assessments for twenty nineteen capital improvements, total costing improvements was two million, three hundred seventeen thousand, one hundred thirty-four dollars and eight cents. City portion is one million, nine hundred sixty-nine thousand, six hundred forty and fifty-eight cents. The cost to be assessed against the property owners will be three hundred forty-seven thousand, four hundred ninety-three and fifty cents. The second resolution we'll need is to call a public hearing on the assessments. We are recommending that the public hearing be held at the fire hall on November twelfth, two thousand nineteen, at the regular council meetings. So council action questions. The first, first one is adopt resolution declaring costs to be assessed in order in preparation of the proposed assessments in connection with the two thousand nineteen capital improvement. Questions, discussion? If not, motion?
I have, I have a correction on what you read. So the city portion of the cost.
He read it.
There's going to be one million, nine hundred sixty-nine dollars, six hundred forty cents and fifty, or six hundred forty dollars.
He read it correctly.
That's what I read.
He read it off.
I read it correctly.
Crazy night tonight, you read it correctly.
Little face of me, don't you? You get it right. Even though you try scumping me, but you make it kind of a quiz.
Yeah, just have something to see if you're really.
I can't see much, pay attention. So number one is to adopt resolution declaring costs. So questions or discussion? Hearing none, do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
We have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Number two, adopt resolution calling hearing on assessments for the two thousand nineteen capital improvement project. Do we have a discussion or questions on that? If not, motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
A second.
Motion is second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. That takes us out of general business. Mayor staff consult reports. City would like to send their sympathies out this week to the families of Catherine Fritsch, Denise Bigelow, and Jerry Erickson. And to all of those that attended and meant to attend and didn't make it, firefighters handing a breakfast on Sunday. It was a great turnout, from what I could tell when I was there, did it skate away all day?
Yeah, it was a really good turnout this year.
And you can still send your donations, nobody says you can't send one anyhow, just because the breakfast is over and it would be very much appreciated. Don't forget Wednesday night, tomorrow night will be the annual open house at the fire hall. I'm hoping for good weather because the kids in this town just love that. Firegate at the fire hall. Zion Church will be holding their Fall Fest. Plan to attend the meatball lunch on November second if you can. And then I got a card for the council from, with mayor and the council from Barr thanking us so much for loving my, and the nice comments that night. I've enjoyed thirty-two years with the city. Please continue your good ideas and your conservative approach. Bye. Thank you, Barr. That's all I got. City administrators report?
Uh, reports in your packet and nothing to add, uh, tonight, so.
Any questions for you? All right, any questions for you, Bill? Thank you. Finance director, Carla, you got a report?
No report.
What? It's going that good?
It's wonderful. I come back every day.
She said something about there's no money to count, so.
All right, any questions for finance director? All right, thank you for that quick and snappy report.
You're welcome.
Public works director Sean, anything else you want to add of yours?
Uh, wet weather, obviously, there's a lot of stuff, the amphitheater, the dirt is all in place, uh, the stage base is built. Uh, we're waiting for, well, less left, but, uh, the cement guy to be able to come in and we can start doing some of the black work and stuff like that, but he's gone next week, so it's going to sit for a couple of weeks. And he's having problems getting cement contractors, just like we did, that can get here in time because everyone's so far behind schedule.
Hey, if you haven't been out there, get a look, kind of visualize, it's pretty cool the way they tell you about the ideas to come up with after we've let Sean send them.
You're gonna like it. How to feel to fire up the lawnmowers again.
Hopefully after Monday, it's, we're done.
And according, speaking of being done with that, although according to the financial statement there, you guys bought your truck.
Yep.
So is that going to be all fitted with the plow by Saturday?
I think we'll trust that the ground temperature's high enough that the snow won't.
All right.
They also, the Ferguson Alexander, Bocknell got started this week doing that, so the last two days, he's been there and he's got place in pipe today, so hopefully when we get on the road here, we get that wrapped up.
Cool.
But the weather, rain Thursday, Friday, Saturday, again, so it'll slow down.
Oh, that's all right, we'll need a little time off or something. Any other questions for public work Sean? All right, thank you Sean. General city engineers report.
So it's a CIP project this year's, um, curb is now in and they'll be working on forming the driveways and getting the sidewalk in. Um, they're also working on getting sod down on the first phase, so, um, doing the dirt work and starting that, the sod work. And then we'll see block top and more sod and be done for the year.
I have to admit, I've run into probably four or five people that live in that vicinity and this project, I've heard nothing but positive now. After all the negative ahead of time and now it's, everybody thinks it's great so far.
Yeah.
So they've done a good job, at least from, well, I know nothing about it, so of course it's easy for me to think it's a good job.
No, it's been, been going fairly well. Uh, weather hasn't been the best, but we're still going to make it before winter, fingers crossed.
I'm going to, one person approached me on the fourth. Wishing the sidewalk was on his side now, even though they didn't want it there, so.
Yeah, well, I'm sure we're going to hear a lot of that, um, wishing that it was on both sides, especially on fourth, but, um, maybe not on fifth and third, but on fourth, it.
We can always add it.
We could someday. Um, you know, safe routes to school could be a way to finance it and add it in the future.
They'll be able to finance it.
We'll have to take that under advisement. Um, they're also working on the water main on tenth.
Yeah, how's that going?
Interesting.
I keep right, reading minimal detouring, but Strikers happens to be a location that I like to visit fairly frequently. I have to go all the way around. To me, that's a complete road closure, that's not. It's not a minimal detour by any stranglehold.
It's for your safety.
Yeah, I guess.
See, they have their storage rooms and you can stay, you know, again.
You can park at the Dairy Queen while you're across the.
We just close that whole thing down and probably you can retire.
Yeah, yeah.
I couldn't believe it, I was, Timmy and I both looking at each other and we're like, what's this Bill talking about minimal detour? We can't even turn around.
The minimal part is with the water main installation and then once that's done, they'll actually allow traffic, so that's the minimal part there. Um.
They're hoping to be done Saturday or Monday. I don't receive that.
Depends on weather. And their actual progress there. Um, with the wastewater treatment plant, Wapishaw has laid out the bio bags and we have started to fill those to make the repairs that are necessary, um, in the tank there, so, um, working with them on that, um, and let's see, I talked with Andy and he plans on scheduling a meeting with you Cheryl next week.
Who's that?
Andy, Masterful, on the West Development GDP. So that's moving forward too. And for next year's CIP, uh, surveys half completed, but we're working on the design of that and making sure we have all the information of the areas that they have completed, so moving forward there. Um, and we should be meeting in the next month or so about making design calls on that one, so.
Is Andy close to being done with that West?
He has everything laid out, um, we still haven't gotten verification from the county for layout, um, and access, but uh, he just wants to go through everything with staff and see where we're at.
The sewer plant is down to one and a half feet in the sledge tank and we can pump that out anytime at the point they get ready to work. Now we can put it in the drying beds, we don't have to finish up in the bags if we don't need to. But we're playing with a couple of things for learning, uh, for future better use on it, so we're going to try something on Thursday with it, with the polymers and stuff like that. So, see if it helps us with our drying beds.
Any questions?
None for me. Any other questions? All right, thank you, Jenna. Library director, but we got a fire chief tonight, right?
Yeah, monthly report for August and September will be in the next, next, uh, meeting packets, uh, getting all that together. I had to track down Angela, I think she's got my August run reports, so I gotta figure out where they're sitting, so I get that report to you guys. Uh, fire prevention week, we're right in the middle of that. Uh, the firefighters breakfast went well on Sunday. Had seven hundred ninety-two people. Uh, we averaged between seven hundred and fifty and eight hundred, so it was, uh, kind of an upper year for us, but it was manageable. Uh, you'll see crews, uh, volunteers coming, they're taking vacation from work, we're doing a lot of school visits this week, uh, to the schools, to the daycares and to the preschools. Open house is on Wednesday from five-thirty till seven o'clock, so please stop by and see us there. Regarding the truck, uh, we're still waiting for, uh, the town in Mississippi to place a truck on Ocha. Uh, I don't think they're in a big hurry, their new truck doesn't show up until probably December or January, but both Steve Denny and Ryan Hodeen are on the website looking multiple times a week. They're also set up to get a notification second gets, uh, placed there, so they'll be able to do that. Uh, then the fire department's, uh, budget committee got together, met, uh, went through the twenty and twenty-one budget, uh, just a couple of modifications to the twenty budget, the overall budget set. Uh, and also getting ready to sit down with Phil and, uh, go through the twenty-one budget, so we can get the contracts out to the townships, uh, before their March meeting. That's all I've got.
Any questions from chief? So you're already fly for the runway, huh?
Yeah, I'm R here, SFD every week tonight this week, so.
All right, any other questions for chief? Thanks a lot. Glad you had a good turnout.
Yeah, it was good, it was fun.
Community appreciates what you do. Well, take us to committee commission board reports, chamber of commerce, they got the E newsletter in there. Prove through that, there's a hundred year celebration for the Legion. And they've also got the dates on for Winterfest, so we can start preparing for that.
Carla will be in charge of the focus here, so.
I, I moved into a house.
That's always been part of the finance director.
I mean, that's a garage.
Yeah, garage.
Barbara did spearhead that one. And she built costumes for all the kids.
EDA HRA, we got some C updates in there. What's been going around the area with them? Next, we got a meeting next Tuesday. No, no, not next Tuesday, do we?
Yeah.
Yeah, we got, yeah, we already. Finance? You planning a meeting or anything soon, Carla, or anything?
Um, no, not, not too soon. All right.
Library?
Nothing right now.
Park board?
Uh, no report.
Personnel?
Meeting before the EDA meeting on Tuesday, right?
Yeah, just to do kind of an update on, on those, uh, public works positions and then just the union contract review.
And the library position too, will be on the agenda.
PMZ, you got minutes, we're first in there?
We have a meeting next, next month, right Cheryl? Nothing more this month?
The next one will be in Harbor Six, at the Civic Center for the Southern House expansion.
All right. Public safety?
Uh, September pulse service are in there, um, we have one hundred and forty pulse of service. Hot calls are going to be here to do traffic, um, have medicals, medical events. Um, as far as general business, uh, having a few, uh, doing some traffic projects and RPs in Southwest from some neighborhood plates. And then also at, uh, the next meeting, we're going to have the sheriff coming down, so if you have any questions or comments. For the year. if you have any questions or comments, questions, I don't know, office, for the year and what for, what's going on for next year as well, Sean?
Any questions from...
Is he still offering that, talking about offering that twenty-five percent discount on the contract, are you aware of, or does he not share that with you?
Been awful with me either.
Actually, I was pretty pleased with him, yeah.
All right, any questions for Mike? All right, thank you, Mike. Public works? Ready?
Uh, nothing too major, they'll be starting to go through a bylaws review.
Rural Cog?
Uh, there, the main business was just as they're doing their comprehensive planning, um, the majority of the meeting's time has been taken for that, and then if you notice, there's an invitation, that's for the general public of, uh, Homestead County to attend, uh, to see some of those things.
Any questions for Bill on Rural Cog? All right. Stu one eighty, any problems there, okay, thanks Lisa. Trans advisory committee, nothing going on in there this week. Communications, we got the sheriff's newsletter in there. Got some dates of interest in there and stuff, keeping you up to date. That takes us to the open mic. City council welcomes and encourages participation with committee members, please keep in mind that your comments must be purged in city business, must adhere to the data privacy rules, that means no employees' name may be used. Please do not expect any action from this council this evening regarding your concerns. We also request that your comments be limited to four minutes, speakers be recognized only once. At this time, I ask that anyone who would like to address the city council, please step up to the podium, state your name and address. Nobody wants to. Move to adjourn. We have a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second? We do have a second. Any play in favor?
Aye.
Any play in polls? Move to adjourn.